There is a place in the north of Spain that got the prettiest girls that you ever will find. Up in the country, they are wild and crazy. It's those Larioja girls who can Larioja. Las bonitas señoritas. Oh, I love them. Las bonitas señoritas. I'm thinking of them. Las bonitas señoritas. I dream about them. They're like the stars, they're like the moon. I just can't live without them now. There's pretty Lola. She can show you her middle. She'll teach you Spanish poems and show you Spanish paradise. Just with her smile, she can open up the heavens. But she'll leave you longing for her Larioja. Las bonitas señoritas. Oh, I love them. Las bonitas señoritas. I'm thinking of them. Las bonitas señoritas. I dream about them. They're like the stars, they're like the moon. I just can't live without them. Sexy Mercedes, well, she loved to dance. And she got that funky dancer, drive the caviareros wild. She dances back and forth, and she dances side to side. It's a Larioja move, a Larioja style. Las bonitas señoritas. Oh, I love them. Las bonitas señoritas. I'm thinking of them. Las bonitas señoritas. I dream about them. They're like the stars, they're like the moon. I just can't live without them. Las bonitas señoritas. Oh, I love them. Las bonitas señoritas. I'm thinking of them. Las bonitas señoritas. I dream about them. They're like the stars, they're like the moon. I just can't live without them. Las bonitas señoritas.
Council will stand in session. Roll call please. I'm not here asking you to stop growth.
A member of my family was killed with a gun. It can happen, and it does, and it wasn't accident.
I'm for you to vote against these fares and cutting services. I pass this five to two.
A lot can happen in a day. We'll make sure you don't miss a thing.
Against these fares and cutting services. I pass this five to two.
From our meeting, we convened at six o'clock and went into closed session. So we are now back. And at the additional agenda items, so there are no additional agenda items for this evening. And just a quick note about a couple of upcoming meeting items. Next Monday, June 17th, we're going to have a presentation on the Tacoma Junction Phase Two Environmental Assessment Study findings. And also a work session that'll be an update and follow-up with Montgomery College on their presentation on their proposed construction. The following Monday, June 24th, there will be no meeting of the City Council that week. We will be in Ocean City at the Maryland Municipal League Annual Conference. The following Monday, July 1st, there's a welcome reception for the new city manager, Brian Kanner, at 6:45 in the atrium lobby. And the first item on that agenda is a presentation from Pepco about their various energy savings programs that should be of interest to a number of people. There's a lot of good information in that. The following week, Monday, July 8th, we have the return to a work session discussion on the Safe Grow Zone ordinance. And finally, Monday, July 15th, we have a presentation on the community proposal for a fenced dog park. So that's just a couple of the upcoming items on various agendas. We do not have anything for the record, so we will go to public comment. And this is the time for anybody who wishes to make any comments on anything that's not on our regular voting agenda this evening or also the public hearing. So if you're here to give testimony about the changes to the housing code, please wait for the public hearing. And if you're here for any of the voting items on the regular meeting, which is the Peddlers and Transit Merchants ordinance, please hold your comments for that. Anything else, whether it's consent agenda or work session items or anything not on the agenda, now's the time. And if you come to the podium and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes, and we'll start with Mr. Lovelace in the back.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace. My name's Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate. One thing I'd like to do is, I guess something I want to say about the Safe Grow Initiative. I'd like to see you people not just ban it on city property, but ban it on all property and all businesses in Tacoma Park, that and the polystyrene. Because what good is it to half-ban something? The wind is just going to blow the chemicals all the way, all over the place anyway if the city bans it and the population uses it. It's really not going to be anything. We've got to make peace with our environment. How do you have half of a war? We don't. So let's do the job and do the job right. We've got to ban polystyrene all the way. We've got to ban the lawn chemicals and these other pesticides all the way. You just can't half-do it. That's doing it half-assed. I don't think Tacoma Park is known for that. We do it and do it right usually. And we don't worry about what everybody else thinks. Tacoma Park does it the way Tacoma Park should do it. I'd like to see a complete ban on these things. We've got to think about other people around us. And also, I'd like to say a shout-out to Kaye Daniels Cohen. I want to see her get well again. I miss her. I want to see her at the meeting, because she brings love to this meeting. And she brings those gold stars. But I'll tell you, she gets a gold peace sign for the things she's done for us and is continuing to do for us. She hasn't given up. She participates by phone. And I think that's very admirable. And I'd like to see other people do the same thing. Community participation is what I'm looking for. And Kaye Daniels Cohen is setting this example. She's leading the train. She's leading the charge on public participation. And we've got to remember out there, everybody, take a message from Kaye on the lesson she's teaching us right now, even though she can't come to the meeting, she participates by phone. But a lot of people out there who are healthy should be able to participate in these meetings. I'd love to see that happen. I don't know how many people are going to speak at the public comment tonight, but the more, the better. If you've got a problem, you've got a complaint, come on out and speak. Those could be the three most important minutes of your life, or your community's life, or your country's life. Really. So please, think about it. Think about it, and then come on out. It doesn't take much to do it. If I could do it in my condition, anybody should be able to do it. Thank you very much for letting me speak. And remember, Kaye Daniels, get well, please. We need you. We love you. We want you. Peace.
Thank you. That's our other public comment.
Sorry, we couldn't wait until later to say this, but as you know, we were here from last week, from our testimony last week. We support the ban on polystyrene on food trucks. We want to let you know that we'll help the city and food trucks find alternatives to polystyrene and places to buy them. Thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Margo, also from the Young Activist Club. Tonight, we are mainly here to ask you how you're going to vote on banning polystyrene because unfortunately, we can't stay until later. So we're interested in hearing from you during your comments. Thank you.
Love it.
And if I can just let you know briefly that we just had some food upstairs because we started meeting at six o'clock, and we realized that it was brought in on carryout from a local Tacoma Park restaurant in polystyrene containers. So we would be happy to have you help that restaurant and others understand what the alternatives are so that we're not doing that.
So are you saying we're part of the problem?
We were part of the problem this evening, and we don't want to be part of the problem. So we'll be happy to guide you to some various places and maybe help you have a discussion with those business owners so that they understand what the alternatives are.
Thank you.
My name's Amy Black, and I'll just finish up the three minutes as one of the parent facilitators. We know that Ace Hardware is interested in stocking and does currently stock non-polystyrene food service ware that people can use. There's lots of communities here, community businesses that use non-polystyrene food service ware. And we're really, the kids are totally web-savvy, could set up a webpage for Tacoma Park, no problem, where the list where to get the alternatives and what to do, and, you know, details the dangers of polystyrene. And we really thank the council for being so supportive of the Young Activist Club over all these years. It's been maybe four or five years now, and for passing your own ban on using city funds to purchase polystyrene food service ware. So we hope that you'll take that into account today and make some history with a ban on the polystyrene food service ware for the food trucks. And I think that would be a really great start to seeing how it goes in Tacoma Park and pursuing it on up through the other establishments that use polystyrene food service ware.
I'd like you to know that Emily and Margo, who just testified, that this is something that I wholly support. I want to make sure to point out that, you know, if McDonald's can figure out a way to avoid using any polystyrene at all, virtually, I think, maybe in their straws, I'm not sure, surely other businesses, food service businesses, should not have that much difficulty figuring it out.
Yeah, it's not so hard anymore. I mean, even good paper plates exist, right?
They've always existed.
It always existed, right?
They're called paper plates for a reason.
You don't have to go to bamboo or some fancy thing, right? Okay, thank you.
And to just let the young activists know that I don't foresee any problem with passing that as part of the ordinance that we're going to be doing this evening. Is there other public comment?
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
I'm Liz Seaton. I live on, at 909 Larch Avenue. And we came tonight, if you can follow me, but we came tonight to talk about the problem of diverting traffic for the Sligo Creek closure onto our streets. Our kids, I know we talked to the council member about this, and maybe we're going to hear from the police chief about this, I'm not exactly sure. But since we have our three minutes, I'll just say this, there is so much traffic coming through the street. We don't have sidewalks, as you know. My kid walks up the street to the bus stop, and there's nowhere for them to walk but in the street. And this traffic is coming through there in huge volumes. My kid walks up the street to the bus stop with her back to the traffic. I mean, I try to prevent that all I can, but, you know, they're kids, they're not paying attention. These people cutting through are speeding at high rates, and it's a huge problem, and that's what we came to talk about tonight.
There's also, the way the street is constructed is that there's no place, the trees, bushes, whatever, come all the way up to the end of people's, of the people's property, the grass area. So there's no way to even walk on that area and avoid the cars. There's a simple solution. I know the sidewalks got derailed, and that's not going to happen, but there can be, there's a simple solution for at least a temporary sidewalk. You can just move in that one, that there's a stretch where there's sidewalks between Elm and, what's the courtyard? I mean, between Heather and the courtyard. And then there's the courtyard to Larch, where all the kids, where there are no sidewalks in that area. That whole area allows for two, for parked cars on both sides, and then two lanes of traffic. It could easily be put, you know, put a temporary sidewalk between the property line and, you know, put cement barriers or whatever it is, little curb height barriers, right? And then there would be one lane of parked cars, and then one lane for traffic, which would slow everything down by necessity, and then another lane of parked cars. And I think that would do, I mean, it would be great not to have the cars diverted there to begin with, but if that's going to happen, there has to be a way to slow down the traffic and to create a safe place for the kids to walk. Because it's, I think we're all, we're just going to be all devastated if what, it only happens after someone is hurt. And it's inevitable that that will happen.
I'm curious, are both sides typically parked up?
Yes. And in, from my block, I live on the block, that's the last block before you hit Heather. And in that, there are cars parked on both sides, but there's only room for one lane of traffic. And then the next block, next block going south, has room for two lanes of parking plus two lanes of traffic. Or parking on either side, on both sides of the street, plus two lanes of traffic.
And if you can please identify yourself.
My name is Rootie Burner-Kadish, and I'm at 1012 Elm Avenue.
Thanks. And I know that if you stay, that the city manager is going to ask the police chief to provide some comments pertinent to your situation.
Thank you. Thanks.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to council comments. Councilmember Schultz.
Oh, no, that's an old line.
Oh, Councilmember Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the community know that the Piney Branch Elementary School pool will have to be closed this summer. The last day the pool will be open is June 14th. Unfortunately, for the pool patrons, the school is doing some renovations with their HVAC system. And those renovations are, make it impossible to use the locker rooms. And so the Montgomery County Public School System has said that the pool will not be available for public use during the summer. It will be closed from June 14th through whatever opening day is for the school in September. I know this is inconvenient to many people. We hope that everyone will come back to the pool when it does reopen. Unexpired pool passes will still be valid. And I also understand that there is at least one person who's planning to use my pool during the summer, but that's Victoria, she's here tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman May.
Thank you. I wanted to speak first about a bill that's before the county council. It's Bill 10-13, which would, people probably remember that roughly 18 months ago, the county passed a bag tax or a bag fee that has resulted in a significant reduction in the use of plastic bags at grocery stores and other businesses. This bill, 10-13, would limit the bag fee, the five-cent fee, to only places that distribute food, so grocery stores, convenience stores. And it would no longer be required at restaurants, at most of the stores and malls, dry cleaners, et cetera. And so I, letting my colleagues know, I planned to write a letter to county council members encouraging them not to take this action at this point. I think they're taking it because there are a few businesses who are upset that they have to, their customers have to pay this fee. But I've heard from community activists that, and people like the Anacostia Watershed Society, who spoke to us about a month ago, I think, that all bags, all plastic bags are a problem in the watershed, not just bags that started their lives with food in them. So I wanted to bring that to people's attention. The second issue I know we're going to get to hear from the chief and maybe the city manager about the traffic cut-through, but it's a huge problem. I was out on Wednesday of last week with the city manager and counted 240 cars going through the Larch Elm intersection in an hour. Continuous, literally continuous traffic at some times. That's equivalent, I think, to the traffic estimate we got for Maple Avenue if they closed the Carroll Avenue Bridge and going through a much more residential neighborhood, as we heard about with no sidewalks. You know, typically cars rolling through, slowly rolling through the intersection, but some cars not stopping at all. I've heard reports of people describing near misses with school buses, a number of other problems, people nearly getting hit in the street. And honestly, I just dread the phone calls that I get, like from Liz tonight, that it's going to be really bad news. So the state highway, in my view, and I think in the city's view, has done an incredibly poor job of posting detour signs, of following up on, I think, the really diligent work the police force and the city have done to point out where signs are needed or where changes are needed. And, you know, we need to do something to get to address that quickly. I plan to, and I already have been contacting members of our state delegation to try to get them to move more quickly. And, you know, signage is the first part. We heard some residents tonight speak of some small fixes that could significantly improve safety. The temporary sidewalk idea is, one, it's a stretch of a block to a bus stop that literally is four houses long, where the sidewalk ends at a small dead end, and it just doesn't continue for this small stretch of block. It would be a huge improvement in the safety for kids waiting at that bus stop. And I know it's only a week left, but literally, it could be done with 20 or 30 orange cones, blocking off a three-foot-wide stretch between the current curb and the cones, and fitting in a space for pedestrians to access that portion of the block and get to the bus stop at Larch and Elm. There have been other suggestions. There is no stop sign currently at the junction of Heather and Elm, and so cars coming down Elm, which are supposed to stop, are not stopping to cars that are moving along Heather, you know, leaving Heather one way or another. And so that's caused a couple of near misses. And then similarly, there's no stop sign at a junction, a block down Larch, where it's, I think it's a three-way intersection, where a stop sign may be helpful as well. But, you know, there are a number of these suggestions. I appreciate the police force's work on enforcement, but SHA is at the moment the biggest, biggest part of the problem. Thank you.
Councilwoman Schultz.
What about the taster?
Well, one thing I do want to remind folks about, and that is, is that with regard to the Erskine Street Traffic Calming Project, which is in Hillwood Manor, the Department of Public Works is scheduled its second meeting, just to make sure I've got that here, for June Thursday, June 20th at 7:00 PM at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue. The first meeting was held about three weeks ago in May, great, a good turnout. And this second meeting will be the follow-up to that to consolidate some of the ideas that were broached in the first meeting. And so I encourage, I want to encourage people who are concerned about Erskine Street, obviously the folks that live in Hillwood Manor. It's a street, in case you're, people don't know it, that has been, through traffic counts, enumerated as the street that has the most cut-through traffic of any street in the city. Now, that may, that standing may have changed based on the, what's going on down here at Larch and adjacent streets, unfortunately. So this is an important project that I'm mentioning. That's June 20th. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shulz.
Thank you. I would like to mention that I recently had lunch with Philip Malcolm, the president of Washington Vintage University Student Body. We discussed having the students at the university working on a number of projects in Ward Five. The most, the project that comes to mind that is going to probably launch the next week or two will be a tutoring service, a reading service for kids in Essex House. This will be accompanied with a with a lunch program for the kids during the summer. Thank you.
How about Kay?
Councilmember Grant.
Hello?
Thanks. I will simply express my gratitude toward the organizers of the Tacoma Park Jazz Fest that took place yesterday, especially Bruce Comer and also Robbie Kimball and the rest of the team. I had a great time there, and from all appearances, so did everyone else who attended, quite a few people. Thank you.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Ah, thank you. I thought you forgot about me, but I'm in the sky. Thank you, Pat, for your kudos and kind remarks. It's awfully hard to live up to them. They're awfully hard to, to get past. There's so many gold stars, so little time. I guess, I've got to give myself a tiny one, because I did my job again yesterday and kept the rain away from a very successful jazz fest. Lots of people, vendors, music, and no rain. It makes a, it takes a bunch of energy to focus on a rain-free day. More really important gold stars to the police department for officer, to Officer of the Year, Detective Private First Class Michael Godlewski, and Civilian of the Year Angela Canatella. Both received their awards at the police banquet this past week, along with other special commendations and awards for other officers. I couldn't go to the affair, but my heart went to each and every one of our police staff for a job well done, taking great care of our residents. Many very playful gold stars to Pat Rombach, who for the fifth year has led the charge to keep Tacoma Park a playful U.S. city. We are one of six designated cities in the state of Maryland. And this one is probably the most important gold star I've given out all year. A huge, at over and above the call of duty, gold star with gold glitter for Suzanne Ludlow, who's been our acting city manager for the past 10 months, and done beyond an excellent job on keeping our ship of state on the straight and narrow. Thank you, Suzanne, for being so excellent and taking great care of our fabulous city. And I, I didn't have any, usually I go first, and I didn't have any save the dates, and you other council members are so good at the, you save the dates. So if, if there's a save the date coming up very soon, somebody jump in and, and catch us all up on it. So I thank you very much. And that's it from my side of the mountain. Bye, Sickel.
Hi, Sickel. And I have a couple of things that I wanted to mention. I wanted to also note that the police department had a very good award ceremony on Friday evening, and Councilmember Siemens and I were happy to attend and participate. And Councilmember Daniels Cohen mentioned the civilian of the year and the officer of the year, but she neglected to mention the supervisor of the year, and that's Sergeant Tina Smith.
Who is that?
And it was also a great pleasure to, over the last couple of weeks, swear in three new police officers. And I believe they were all lateral hires, which speaks very well for the reputation of our police department. Councilmember Daniels Cohen mentioned the certification as a playful city again this year. I'll also mention that about 500 cities and towns applied for the designation playful city, and there were only 217 who got it. And as she mentioned, there were six in Maryland, and Tacoma Park was one of them. I will provide some additional details after I put a little report together on my participation last week in the Local Government Advisory Committee on the Chesapeake Bay Meeting that I attended in Baltimore. One of the outcomes from that was talking with one of the officials from Maryland who's in charge of overlooking various grants for environmental issues, including the grant that the city got for part of the Ritchie Avenue Project. And it was heartening to hear that he was encouraging us to apply for some more grant funds. And it sounds like we're pursuing a way to do that, that there are grant funds available. I also wanted to mention to Councilmember Mail on the Montgomery County Bill, that I think probably all of us would like to sign on to whatever gets sent to the county council to indicate that we're all in favor of keeping the bag tax the way it is. And I think it would be more powerful if all of us signed on to that. So if you, if you can make that available, I think we could all sign it. Also, I wanted to let people know that if anybody's interested in seeing the full set of full-size plans for the proposed renovations of Pavilion III at Montgomery College, that there are now a full set of plans available for viewing at the Nunley Student Services Building in Room 306, and those are available for, to look at on Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 5:00. I'll also join Councilmember Grimes in commending the people who put to the Jazz Festival together. I enjoyed myself, and I particularly enjoyed the Philadelphia Jazz Orchestra, which was made up of maybe a dozen or so young people, 20 and under. And they provided some really great music, great entertainment. And the, the young woman who was the lead vocalist for them sang a lot of standards that everybody knew and did a really good job at it, because it was possible for everybody to kind of critique her against what they knew, as opposed to maybe some things that they weren't familiar with. And she did a great job. And it was great to see people out there. And then finally, just wanted to remind folks that yesterday was the first home game of the Silver Spring Tacoma Thunderbolts, which is the summer college-age wooden bat baseball team. They play at Blair High School at the stadium there. And there are a number of games throughout the rest of June and all of July. And it's a great night of entertainment, real cheap for people to go there. Kids under a certain age are free. And I think for the opening night last night, they had 432 attendees, which is the largest crowd that has been to one of those. So if anybody likes baseball, it's a lot of fun. And with that, I think we have covered council comments, and so we'll go to the city manager.
Good evening. I'd like to start by calling the chief to talk a little bit about the impact on the city of the closure of Sligo Creek Parkway at New Hampshire Avenue.
Good evening. Sergeant Gilbert, who's also our traffic coordinator, has been working on this and actually the point of contact for the complaints, so that we keep them all going in one spot downhill a little bit. But the reality of it is, the state did drop the ball. The, the signage was ins, it was totally insufficient and, and in some cases, nonexistent. Sergeant Gilbert actually went around with our public works and most of the signs that you see up now that have reduced some of that, that residential traffic was put up by public works and the police department. The state engineer was contacted. He did send an email last week, late last week, that he drove the routes, and many of the signs are behind trees, or they're in the wrong place, or they're not up at all, and has ordered the, the construction crew to add those signs. I didn't anticipate it would get done today, especially with the weather. We're going to just keep a close eye on it. Hopefully that, that will be up this week. So the, and you have the contact information. So we, just so.
We're all getting the same warning.
And what is that?
Flash flood.
Okay.
One of the things that I think that we need to be careful of is, we, as a city, are not putting any of the traffic down residential streets. That was never in intent. Unfortunately, that's, that's, the first week that this, that this road was closed, people will, as they usually do, try to find alternative routes and not necessarily respect the residents or, or the, the people using those roads on a daily basis. Once they've found out that they can't get there from here, they, they've since found other ways. And Sergeant Gilbert will go into some of the traffic counts that we've had and, and what we're doing about it.
I started receiving complaints on, on the 31st, which was a Friday, and I immediately put in an email to Troy Finkel, who's supervisor for the right-of-way, to meet with him on that following Monday. That Monday morning, I went up to Glengarry, the dead end of Glengarry, just to observe. And there were a total of 35 vehicles that actually went to the dead end on Sligo Creek Parkway, lost, trying to get turned around. Several of them cut through Glengarry. And at that point, that was my biggest concern, to try to keep that traffic off of that tight alleyway. So I stayed there for 30 minutes. There were 35 vehicles that came up to the dead end. And then I went up to find Troy at the public works, so we could actually drive the route and try to come up with a solution for, at least immediately, trying to keep that traffic off of Glengarry. So that's when we came up with the no-left-turn sign from Flower Avenue onto Sligo Creek Parkway. And that helped a little bit, because the next morning, the traffic counts were significantly less. They were down to 16 vehicles. So we helped with that a little bit. So we're looking forward to the signs that State Highway hope to, to get put up for the next few days, we hope.
Yeah. And in regards to the, the temporary sidewalk, I mean, I'm, I'm not the traffic engineer, and I don't know what, what PW is going to say they need for the minimum clearance for cars on that roadway. And I would defer to PW, but we will, we will work with them.
I think we'll come up with something. I think there's enough room that we can, we can make something work.
Yeah.
Could you do it quickly?
Yes. We're trying to, we've been trying to jump quickly.
And the other thing that we're also going to, we, we do have a morning and afternoon detail that, when, as calls permit, that the officers are there to enforce the, the stop sign and traffic violations. Really not a lot of speeding. It may be, you know, it's just that those roads are normally so quiet, relatively quiet, that when you do get to cut through traffic, it just seems like they're, they're going very fast. But with some of the traffic calming, they're, the speeds are actually within the speed limit, albeit on a tight street, that may be too fast. So we will be doing some enforcement there and high visibility as well.
And the speed limit on that?
Well, the speed limit, unless otherwise posted in the city, is 25 miles an hour, is the prima facie speed limit in residential zones, where the state law is 30 for, for residential streets, which obviously you can't do on most of the streets here.
Okay. Yeah, I think just, you know, in some, dropping the ball is kind of the understatement on this one. And we, so far, the chief has kept me from doing anything evil to some state highway employees, which I appreciate. But the, the numbers are going down. Our temporary signs are helping. The sign program that the state highway should have had in place in the first place will take another day or two to get in. And I think people are going to get used to it. And with school out of, once we're out of school, that will help a little bit in addition. I think we'll find some way for those, that one stretch of Larch. That, to me, seems like it's a reasonable proposal, but I'll, I'll just double-check on the, on the actual dimensions of what we put up. My guess is it would be some kind of tape or something along with some cones, as a, as a very temporary measure.
And is that something we'd be able to do without days of informing residents and, you know, sort of that?
Oh, yeah.
Quickly?
Yeah, there's no, there's no.
Because there's always, the parked cars there are the things that would make a challenge in terms of actually physically putting it in place.
I think, I think that we can work with the neighborhood to, to make it happen.
And what's particularly frustrating about all this is that we knew that State Highway had started out signing detours and things like that incorrectly, and we had alerted them that they had issues here and that they, and that we needed them to do certain things, and they haven't done them.
And then, and they did change a number of the signs, but they, you know, clearly didn't put up the right signs in time for them to close the road.
I just, I didn't know if you had something else. Okay, so, Councilmember Schultz.
Is it, is it, you're feeling that, that if the detours get put up the way that they are supposed to, or were supposed to have been put up, or will be hopefully by the state engineer, that that will largely fix the problem? Or are you not that sanguine?
No, actually, actually, I think that the longer, the period that the road is closed, people will figure it out. Unfortunately, like you said, we're only an accident away from something happening. I think it will improve it. I, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't improve it. The, most of the reason that people are cutting down those streets, and they are lost, I mean, they're, they're looking at their GPS, they're looking at their cell phones, trying to figure out, we're on the cellphone, how do I get out of this neighborhood? So when the signs are up, I think it will take care of some of the confusion. It would have been better if that was done up front, but it's not. I, I do believe that it will be an improvement. I also believe that time, you know, as we've seen in the last week, the numbers are going down because people feel, figured out that this isn't the best way to go.
And, and the people, I mean, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is this northbound traffic on New Hampshire that's passing through the light at 410, and then somewhere or another saying, oops, and then deciding to make a left turn into Larch? Is that what the pattern is?
I think so, because it seems like the evening rush hour is worse than the, the morning rush hour getting to Sligo Creek.
Actually, we get, we, we saw in both directions, there were a lot of folks, because there's, there was no indication, when you got into Sligo Creek Parkway going east, that the road ended before, at New Hampshire, a lot of people went all the way almost to the end, and then had to go up through the neighborhood to get out of there. And.
So they were filtering down from the north?
They were coming from the west, they were coming from the west on Sligo Creek.
Okay, from, okay, that's what I was trying to say.
And, and so, yeah, and then once you're there, you're, you're stuck.
You're lost.
And, you know, there wasn't a sign out at Maple that said, road closed at New Hampshire.
Yes, I noticed that.
So, I mean, just really basic things weren't there.
There were, as, as Sergeant just said, there were two signs down there that said road closure, but it didn't tell them where it was.
Right, it said, it had X miles ahead.
Yeah. So, and, and again, we've got signs up there that says no access now to New Hampshire Avenue that are up, and, and that seems to have helped quite a bit as well.
All right, I get the picture.
Do we know what sort of signage that SHA is going to be putting up? Because I think the key thing is we've got, the city has put up signs now that say, you know, you can't get somewhere this way, but there's no signs that say, well, how do you get where you're trying to go?
Yeah, the new signs should say, should say Sligo Creek Detour or, with the orange sign, with the detour sign, and it's going to specify which detour it's for. Those, at least that's what's in the email that the state sent.
Right. We do have a little map of what they're putting up.
And I think I pointed out to both of you that over the weekend, someone actually removed the barricade at the end of Sligo, and so cars were driving through. And I, I would hope that SHA can put a more permanent, they've got a more permanent barricade on three-quarters of the road.
Right.
But, you know, one quarter, somebody was able to move the sandbags out of the way. Entrepreneurial. Is it possible to get, at least for myself, but maybe other council members would be interested too, that any stats in terms of enforcement, either stop sign violations or cellphone use violations, anything like that, just sort of?
And just remember, cellphone use violations are secondary.
Sure, yeah.
So, yeah, we're probably not going to have a lot of that, unless they run the stop sign, and then you'll get it. But we can do that. Again, it's, it's call-driven, and unfortunately, rush hours sometimes are busiest times, so we don't know who's have somebody down there.
I just appreciate the updates. It's very helpful when we get them on Flower Avenue, so.
May I say that, that in a, as, in an effort not to ever allow this to happen again for future projects, namely, I'm thinking the first one that comes to mind, the closing of the Carroll Avenue Bridge, that we take the initiative and decide where the detours need to be. Obviously, they need to be on state highways, but where the signs ought to be, and where those signs, what they should say with, you know, on it, and then present that to the SHA and say, unless you see something wrong with this, why don't you put these signs up? We've just done your work for you. Because these guys obviously don't have a clue.
We certainly will, we certainly will work with them. I, the, whether or not we can exactly do that, we certainly have a good example of what they can never do again. And we'll be very vigilant about it.
So tell them we're, how proud we are of the good example that they set of how not ever to do it ever again.
And I, you know, I certainly will do anything in my power to ensure that, that they don't take the next step with Carroll.
They will do it again. They had jackhammers out when they were resurfacing Piney Branch Road at 2:00 in the morning. Then they essentially did the same thing when they were patch resurfacing Philadelphia. The SHA is not a responsive agency when it comes to dealing with residential neighborhoods.
And I agree with Councilmember Schultz, we can take them that plan. They may not go along with it, but we can take it to them.
Well, we certainly will be very forthright on that.
And I believe in this case, we actually did have some, some, some issues with the initial plans and went back to them and said, no, you need to change this. And it was changed several times.
They just didn't complete it.
They just didn't do what they, they were asked.
But on, on city roads as opposed to state ones, we can put any signs up we want that say anything.
That's true. But unfortunately, we're trying to keep, there, there's very few city roads that this actually affects, other than pushing. affects, other than pushing everybody off of the state roads into the neighborhoods.
Right.
So almost every, all the detour routes are really state roads at this point.
Yeah.
And we can put the signs up there, too.
Yeah.
If I can follow up, um, the, the kind of next fund is the resurfacing of four-ten, and that is one of the detour routes, it is the primary detour route for the Sligo Creek Parkway closure. At this point, we've had some back and forth, Daryl Braithwaite's had some back and forth with State Highway over when the resurfacing of four-ten will occur. The proposal is that it occur the last week of June through the Fourth of July, and that the milling and paving be done at night. The, we had, we thought, talked them into having it postponed until after the Fourth of July because of the parade. And the last I heard is that they were going back to the early June, to the last week of June date, but with this weather, that might change. They will, however, in, ensure that the section that the parade route goes on is paved at the time of the Fourth of July parade, they say.
Do they have a clue what section that is?
Yes. There's been, that's been, there's been a lot of discussion about that between Daryl Braithwaite and the folks at SHA.
And what folks?
Kevin Nowak and-
Oh, if it's Kevin Nowak, it's for a right person, but, uh-
The, at this point, I, our efforts are still going to be to get the milling and paving started after the Fourth of July, the week of July eighth. But that, you know, at some point, it is going to affect, again, the, kind of the traffic patterns that are affected by the Sligo Creek Parkway closure when that happens. It won't be for very long, but it will have an impact. So, just letting you know. Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, Chief.
I've got a number of other items. I'll try to be brief on them. I had sent emails to you, councilmembers, so this could go relatively quickly. The first item is relatively minor. It has to do with parking passes, permit parking passes. I would like to modify the regulations that we have for permit parking passes to allow a household that affirms that it does not have a car in, that, but it is within a permit parking area, be allowed to pay five dollars for a two-year period of time of having visitor passes. This is something that helps accommodate those people who either don't have cars or not able to drive, that do live in these areas, but need the visitor passes for those who come to visit them. There's kind of a hole in our administrative regulations related to these folks, so I would like to have this as kind of a temporary, um, action until the admin regulations are finalized. But this way, it would be appropriate for those folks who are applying now for the July one date of the permit parking. If that's, unless that has a problem with anybody, I'd like to just go ahead with that.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you. The next thing that I'd like to bring up has to do with the discussion that happened last week related to sidewalks and curb painting, and a variety of items. The question is, at some point, there will be a discussion about, with council, about all of the different items that were addressed. But in the meantime, we have a number of projects that would begin July one, sidewalk projects in a variety of, of areas. And what we need to know is if there needs to, if there's a council desire for a moratorium on sidewalk or curb painting, or ADA ramp work, or use of bricks for tree protection in the city beginning July one, until you would make a different kind of decision. We do have a lot of interest in sidewalk construction and in painting yellow curbs and that kind of thing, but I also recognize that there was a lot of interest in the presentation last Monday. So I'm asking if there's some direction that I need to be giving to the Director of Public Works.
Um, you asked us those questions today on email so we could think about them. A couple people responded, and maybe if I can just try taking a stab at what I think might represent where we, where we want to go, and if there's some differences or disagreements, we can go from there, and then we can get through this fairly quickly. My sense is that we don't want a moratorium on the sidewalk work, that we probably do want any-
We can distinguish new sidewalks from ADA, please.
Okay. Um, that, on any ADA work, my sense is that, if there's any, I'll, let me back up a second. On sidewalk work of any description in the historic district, if there is any proposed in the historic district, the sense was, we might want to wait on that.
So a moratorium on sidewalk work within the historic district?
That, let me just start there and see if people agree with that.
I, let me just qualify, because a moratorium is a fairly strong word, that-
Suspension.
It would be nice for the city staff to keep themselves busy in other parts of the city.
And, sure, Jack.
But when they're no longer busy, not to just not do sidewalks. So it's, it's a more, not a more-
It's, it's a-
Work on other, other areas first.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But coupled, coupled with that investigation of alternative materials and so on.
Right. Because, because we, we might want to make a switch to that other type of concrete after they've kind of tested it. I think there was general consensus among everybody that the standardization of the signs was definitely the way to go.
Yeah, and I don't think there was a question about that.
Right.
That's moving forward.
My sense is that people probably want to call a halt for a while to curb painting.
I've heard real mixed feelings. Is there a difference in location, or do you want to take a vote kind of on that?
Do people, do people feel that there's necessity for curb painting to continue, or that we could, we could say for the moment that we just not do that? It's, my, my sense in looking today was, it's in a lot of places, and even when it's for things like the five feet back from a, from a driveway that, in some places, like in Old Town, the paint doesn't agree with the parking spaces, it's confusing.
I would suggest that maybe, that we hold off on any except for safety concerns, because I know some of the ones that were recently done on Ritchie Avenue were to address specific safety concerns.
Other thoughts, Councilmember Grimes, Councilmember Mail?
Right. I, I could see a safety concerns exception, but specifically, parking concerns, no exception. And part of the point of the presentation was that irregularity of curb painting in Tacoma Park causes confusion and causes people to think they can legally park, they may legally park where they may not because of that irregularity, so that if we add more painting to focus on parking concerns, then that's going to potentially add to the confusion. And I'll just recap two things that the presentation said. One is that sometimes the painting is where no one would even consider parking anyway. We have quite a few streets with one side of the street but not the other parking, and that it's often redundant to the signage that's out there. So, yeah, if you can make a compelling case for safety concerns, as Councilmember Seaman says, then, then, yeah, I would look for that exception. And then the other thing that the Public Works Director said that she would investigate, I believe, the possibility, that's technical possibility of removing paint.
Yes, there is, there- That can, that can be done.
Yeah, and, and we need to come up with a coherent policy for, for this, whether it's done by the Public Works Director for this particular thing, or whether it gets deferred to a committee is a different question. I think that in this particular case, it could be proposed by the Public Works Director. Okay, thank you.
So is there a sense that, I just, I just want to try and keep it moving along. I'll, I'll get to you.
Can I?
That, that it sounds like we're moving in the direction of safety concerns only on additional painting for the moment. Councilmember Mail?
First question and then a comment. My question is, are curbs painted yellow in front of fire hydrants?
I think it varies.
Is there parking restriction in front of fire hydrants that residents should be aware of? So that would count?
Yes, you can't park in front of a fire hydrant.
You know, that's part of the driver's license exam, which is, as you say, that people violate it, but they're going to violate it whether there's a yellow curb paint there or not.
I, I guess this, the, and I'm assuming it rarely happens, but if residents outside the historic district request that curbs be painted near their driveway, I would not be inclined to ban them from getting that request answered.
Well, I would. I think it should be regularized throughout the city. This wasn't only a historic district question.
Other thoughts, Councilmember Schultz?
Um, maybe we could sort it out in a different way, and that's to say that definitely we're all in agreement that inconsistencies between parking signs and, and paint need to be systematically removed. And the Department of Public Works is going to do that starting now, so that people, you know, so to reduce confusion. But otherwise, I, until we have come up with a new policy for deciding how we're going to get people to park where they're supposed to park and not park where they aren't supposed to park, I don't think that's a wise idea to stop the yellow paint or some kind of markings, because it's extraordinarily frustrating when you, when, when, when you can't get through a street, or, or you can't pull out of your driveway, and you feel like you want to take matters into your own hands, which of course you don't want to do. I mean, but, so I, I would encourage just to, you know, say, outside of the historic district, which I'm happy to make that exception, I can understand why, that we just continue to do the, the painting where necessary until we come up with a plan. All we have had so far is a presentation, a very excellent presentation from some, from a group of concerned residents, but we have not heard from the other five wards in the city coming here talking about this. And like Councilmember Mail was saying, a lot of people are very concerned about accessing their driveways and other things like that. So I think that that's something we need to be careful about.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. Ward four residents have the luxury of being near the Lee Jordan Field, which is the home to many activities throughout the year. And as such, we have a lot of, of parking on our streets, especially Ritchie Avenue. And I think the same is true with, along Maple Avenue. There's a lot of, of parking because of the activity along Maple Avenue with all the apartment buildings and the community center here. And, um, you know, I find it inconvenient sometimes because there is not a whole lot of parking, and so people park right up to the edge of the driveway. But on the same time, I think as a community, it's nice that we can kind of get along and, make do when there are activities such as a folk festival, or soccer games, or football games, or other activities on Lee Jordan Field, or activities here at the community center. I think the city residents would end up pretty stressed if we started giving, um, parking tickets for every infraction of parking within, parking too close to, to driveways. And I think the city would look kind of ridiculous, and Public Works expenses would be pretty high if we expect to have yellow curb painted next to every driveway. So I would support Councilmember Grimes' suggestion that we kind of hold off on those restrictions at this point.
Council, anybody else? I'll just say, I, I agree with Councilmember Seaman and Councilmember Grimes. I think we can hold off for this for a little while.
Okay, case it, yeah.
Was, Councilmember Daniels Cohen was saying she agrees with that position as well? Okay.
Right.
So it's, it sounds like, Councilmember Smith, did you want to weigh in on this one?
All I'll say is that I would support that, you know, for the time being, we shouldn't paint any more curbs. I haven't heard any residents complain about any parking next to driveways. So I, I would support Councilmember Grimes' proposal.
Okay, so what I've heard is no sidewalk work in the historic district, and no curb painting unless there's a particular safety concern exception. We'll be coming up with a consistent policy related to curb painting. We will be working on, on some experiments about concrete for sidewalks. That will take a little bit of time. There was also the question about using bricks for tree protection, and if they're red bricks or gray bricks. Do we want to just come back to that, or?
I, let me just say, I was going to propose something that I thought might be consistent with what I heard generally last week, when, when there was the presentation about the, the mats, and by kind of extending that over to the, to the brick. My thought was, if we, if we thought about using the red mats and the red bricks, those both call attention to things that people need to know, and it's the consistent difference between the gray or white or whatever sidewalk and red that kind of helps them know, and it can get us away from all of the kind of caution, yellow.
But that, but that is the color of brick.
It, it is. I haven't seen any color but red brick on trees, and it seems to work. It allows the roots to grow and, and move around and do whatever roots do on a big tree. And you just have to replant the bricks, what, every few years? That's the problem. It, it's high maintenance, so you can't just put it down and say, kiss it goodbye.
I, I think the question was whether red brick or some other color of brick, like the sidewalk.
Yeah. My listening of the, the, the presentation last week wasn't so much about the, what we were doing, but it was about the color. The, the, the folks from Ward one wanted us to change the color, and to me, while I agree with them, I'd much rather see red. The expense of doing that is exorbitant. I don't know how much it would cost to change all those yellow plates and then, and then, you know, paint, paint instead of yellow.
I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody was talking about, at the moment, changing any of the existing ones.
Red. I can't hear you, Mayor.
I don't, I don't, I don't think anybody was talking about changing the existing ones. It was proactively going forward in the work to commence after July one.
Do you really think, I thought they meant changing it all.
They, they were talking about the possibility. We're not talking about that right now.
Good, 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 because having half the city yellow and half the city red, or, you know, is, I think, not such a hot idea. That, to me, would not be very pretty. That's just how I am.
We have, we, we have a mix now.
Okay, so what, what do you want to do?
Say again?
Do you?
Council, Council, Councilmember Mail?
I just wanted to add that while we haven't been hearing from residents about, maybe we haven't been hearing from residents about painting the curbs near their streets, we have been hearing from residents about repainting the sheroes on the road for the bike lanes. And I would love to get the city to prioritize that if we're gonna-
It's, it's, it's moving forward.
It is, okay. That's great. And I just note that walking around through DC extensively today in the rain, they have almost all of their, whatever they're called, the rumble strips at the, at the intersections, they're almost all red brick. And they age quite well and sort of fade into a color that's a lot less extreme than the bright yellow. Thank you.
So are people okay with, for the moment, for going forward with new work?
Red bricks, red mats in the future.
Yes, red bricks.
No sidewalk work in the historic district, and holding off on curb painting except for safety concerns?
I'm not for red mats.
Everybody set with that?
I think half the city is red mats.
And then it will all come back.
If it's going to be ugly. Ugly.
And, and we're going to have a discussion about repurposing the Safe Roadways Committee into a, what did you call it, Streets and Sidewalks or something like that?
Well, the-
Yes, we, yes, we will.
There'll be many discussions.
Streets and sidewalks committee, something of our nature.
Could I just propose, instead of having a discussion, that we just move for a revision to the existing ordinance to be created, to come back to us using, you know, we're supposed to having a discussion, and then doing it, just, let's just get a draft ordinance in front of us and make the change relatively quickly? It seemed like everyone agreed.
Sure.
If everyone agrees, I don't, but.
I think we more want people to, to speak up. That was just Ward one. And, and I think there was one person from Ward three on that committee. Am I crazy? Well, don't answer that.
Nope.
I just, my thought was to schedule something relatively quickly to come back, to see whether we want to combine that or not.
Okay.
I think that there certainly needs to be a discussion with our Director of Public Works and some of the other folks about some technical responses and, and things going forward. And I have no problem with, you know, if there's some direction from council about, you know, rewriting the, the description of the- you know, rewriting the description of the committee, that can come also before you to discuss. That's fine.
So maybe for the discussion, if there's any draft.
Right.
Ordinance that could come along with that for consideration.
And we wouldn't even have to do it by ordinance, correct? We could write a resolution, just as we do to create a task force, and use a resolution to temporarily add sidewalks to the mission of the existing standing Safe Roadways Committee. That would give it a charge for a year, however long we wanted to do it, and, you know, we could move forward more quickly.
I think we can have that work session discussion fairly quickly and we can keep moving in this agenda.
Okay. And I have a couple of other quick, very quick notes. The first is that we found out today that the city did win the cost of abating the violation of thirty-six Philadelphia. So that judgment came down today in our favor, which is good. The second is, the second quick item, is that the OLL report, which has to do with municipal tax duplication, different ways of kind of calculating municipal tax duplication at the county, will be discussed before the GO committee, probably July 8th, it may be the 15th. There, it's on the schedule as the 8th, there may be a little bit of delay. Nevertheless, once that report becomes public, which I think will be in just the next couple of weeks, we'll be studying it carefully and everybody will be looking at it in preparation for response to the county council. And the final comment is that I will be on vacation starting tomorrow morning and I will see you then on the 24th in, at the Ocean City Maryland Municipal League Conference. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Comment?
Next item is adoption of minutes. We have one set for June 3rd. Would somebody like to move their approval?
Can we go back?
Is there a second? It's been moved in second. All councilmembers in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved unanimously.
Can we go back to State Highway for a minute?
Um, we can hear you. Do we really need to go back there?
You don't want to go back there?
No.
Right. I just missed it. That's okay, I'll send you an email.
Okay, thank you. We will now go to our public hearing. This public hearing is on proposed revisions to Title VI Housing of Tacoma Park Code regarding residents' right to civic inclusion and the obligations of landlords. And Ms. Danes, do you want to just give us a little brief synopsis of what this is so that everybody knows what this is about and then we'll take signups?
Good evening. The council's, the public hearing this evening is to consider comments on two new sections that are being, that have been proposed to be added to the chapters on housing. The first, as the mayor indicated, would obligate multi-unit, basically apartment buildings and condominiums to allow access to the facility to, for candidates who are interested in contacting the residents as part of an election process. The second is to require landlords to provide tenants of voting age with information on voter registration and city laws and regulations regarding elections. Attached to the cover memo is the proposed language. You'll note that it's included in two different sections of the code. The obligation of landlords to provide access to multi-unit residential facilities would be in the general provisions section of the chapter. And then the requirement that landlords provide voter information to tenants would go into landlord-tenant relations section. The primary requirements of the section regarding providing access to multifamily residential properties would give candidates of local to federal elections access to the property with an appointment ninety days in it, excuse me, would give them access to the facility within ninety days of the election. They would need to set that up with the, on an appointment basis with the landlord. They could provide access to the facility between the hours of 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM. There's no restriction in terms of the day of the week. The candidate would have to give written notice to the tenants that they were going to be entering the facility. There would have to be a written notice and posted a minimum of twenty-four hours in advance of the anticipated appointment. And that the tenants would have the option of posting on their door an indication that they are or are not receptive to having candidates or city employees, as this ordinance would allow, that they would prefer not to have any canvassers or political candidates knocking on their door. Very rough, but that's basically what's being proposed.
Thank you. I have two names who signed up on the sign-up sheet for this public hearing. The first is Sean Farr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Sean Farr. I'm Senior Vice President of Government Affairs with the Apartment and Office Building Association of Metropolitan Washington. It's a very creatively named trade association that represents owners and managers of office buildings and apartment buildings. Our members have approximately eighty-five thousand apartment homes in suburban Maryland, including in Tacoma Park. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here, to speak very briefly to these proposed changes regarding access to multi-unit residential facilities by qualified candidates. I know the time is limited and I'll provide detailed written comments for your consideration at a later time, but I did want to appear and just at least let you know that rental housing providers do have concerns. They're fundamentally legal in nature, but also include practical considerations arising from our members' obligations to tenants. From the legal perspective, this measure would, in our view, be a pretty extraordinary intrusion into the private property rights of multifamily building owners, rental and condominium. I've not seen any analysis by the city attorney or the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs of the legal underpinnings of the proposal, but I just would say that I believe that there's ample cause for thorough analysis by the council of, on these points. If a legal authority can be found, be assured that it will also require that both ample justification and necessity for circumscribing the rights of property owners be shown. The goal here, increasing voter participation, is a laudable one, but the questions that will arise will have to do with whether or not lack of access to multifamily properties by candidates is a primary or significant cause of the lower turnout in some buildings and in some wards. And also regarding whether this measure is drawn as narrowly as it should be. On its face, it's actually pretty broad. So I just wanted to appear tonight to express those concerns and let you know that we'll follow up with some additional information. And I just very briefly wanted to say something about the other changes to Title VI. I know that's not the primary subject, but may I continue for just a, okay. I was recently sent a link to a notice posted by the city clerk dated April 25, which I believe was the official public notice that the council's considering a number of changes to Title VI. There were five PDFs reflecting the various changes that were linked. However, those links were broken, still are. I checked today, when you click on them, you get a page-not-found notice. So unfortunately, I'm unable to provide comments to the council on those proposed changes. It certainly would be my intent to do so as soon as I can see and review the actual proposed changes. So thank you again for the opportunity to participate tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're, just so you know, we're tentatively scheduled to have first reading of the ordinance amending the code for the housing on July 8th and second reading on July 22nd. Also signed up is Victoria Sutton, but I believe she's left. Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to testify? Mr. Lovelace?
Hello, my name's, hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, your official Pice delegate. I like that changes to Title VI mainly because of, I think that's going to increase our voter, our turnout and our voter registration if we can allow the tenants to make a choice if they want to have soliciting at their doors or not. If they say, if they don't mind it, we might get a better voter turnout. I think that'd be a great idea. And also other ideas to the code are all right, too, like the one where, also on the solicitation about the, I think other things should be added to that, too, like on Halloween. I think the kids should be able to come in and get a trick or treat somewhere because on that day, I used to love it when I could give something to the kids. But this time lately, I haven't been able to get any. And they see, there's a note on our doors, on main entrance saying, no solicitation. And I think that that's what's scaring them off. But I think the idea of increasing our voter turnout in any way possible is good by me. We need to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I relay a brief comment?
Let me just see if there's anybody else who wants to testify. Anybody else who wishes to testify at the public hearing? Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public hearing. I'll note that we had two people who provided written testimony to the clerk. I think that was for, yes, that was for the public hearing this evening from Jill Rao and Anand Parikh. Councilmember Grimes, you had a quick question?
It's actually, maybe this is irregular, but in any case, I wanted to relay a comment from a constituent of mine, Mr. Steve Shapiro of Willow Avenue, who asked that the entitlement, I'm sorry, I should call it the right of inclusion for tenants in multi-unit buildings be extended to include people who are collecting petition signatures for reconsideration of city acts. And that would also extend to state and Montgomery County Act. In other words, a recognition that these are electoral matters where an individual who is not a candidate is essentially campaigning all the same. And I have proposed some language to my council colleagues and will pursue inclusion of that language. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith, did you?
Thank you. Just a brief comment after hearing Councilmember Grimes. I would have to say at this point, I would not be able to support that proposal. I am getting pushback from tenants now about they do not want any further type of access given by the council to other groups or organizations into apartment buildings.
Okay, thanks. We'll see what transpires in the way of an amendment and discuss that when it comes for first reading.
Mr. Mayor, just commenting briefly, we did receive legal council's advice on this issue of addressing other political issues and received the guidance that it would be very difficult to do.
That concludes the item on the public hearing and we will go to our regular meeting agenda. We have two voting items. The first one is a second reading ordinance amending Tacoma Park Code, Chapter 8.12, Peddlers and Transit Merchants. Would somebody like to move the second reading ordinance?
So moved? Second?
Moved by Councilmember Smith, second by Councilmember Mail. Is there a council discussion? Councilmember Schultz?
In taking a longer look at this proposed action, I'm concerned about some things that might be changed and might make the, might make this a more workable ordinance. And what I'd like to say is that I think that we're not paying enough attention to the distinction between, well, I guess, for lack of a better term, not used in this ordinance, but I would just call it permanent food truck vendors. And these are the ones that, for example, there, you have the one at the corner of Route 410 in New Hampshire Avenue that's been stationary for years on private property. There's another one like that on private property at the intersection of Ann Street and New Hampshire Avenue in a parking lot. And the proposal, I gather, that we have so far is that the city would, for these kind of vendors would require a site, opportunity to review a site plan before the city would issue its permit to do that. And I think that these type of vendors tend to run the risk to the city of being much more likely to create a workload for the city staff with regard to code enforcement, trash, and other problems that that might accrue. So it seems to me that there's a distinction between those type of vendors, which are small businesses and certainly need to have an opportunity to exist somewhere in the city, and the kind of vendors that we've all been trying to encourage over the last year, which I would call temporary vendors. And those are the ones that show up for three or four hours on Friday evenings at the city lot and may, and other locations in the city. But they are, they're not what you would call a roaming vendor by this definition in this thing, which is a person that stays in no location for more than fifteen minutes. And they don't, they don't really seem to be adequately delineated. So these are the kind of vendors, I think, where we want to encourage as many of them as possible because of the vitality and choices that they bring to consumers in the city. And there's nothing in this ordinance that sort of tries to make that distinction between those two kind of vendors. And what I'd like to suggest is that we amend some of our definitions, but also maybe amend the fees that we would ask these vendors to pay for the right to vend. In terms of the permanent vendors, I think that a fee in their neighborhood of around $500 a year, considering the workload that they pose or potentially pose, makes sense because really they are very low overhead costs. That fee could either be paid by the property owner or the vendor himself. That could be worked out between the two parties. But for the so-called temporary vendors, they should pay a fee. And I think that the $50 fee that we've gotten in here makes a lot of sense. But I'd also suggest even going a little further and where we can get those vendors to serve food in compostable containers, that we would reduce the fee to zero, just waive the $50 fee. They still have to go through the application process, but I think it's a good idea to try to put a, an incentive into the ordinance to, if we're not going to, if we're not going to outright, and we are proposing that an outright measure, a measure here that bans polystyrene altogether on vendors. And of course, we can do that, but it, but there may be a better way of doing it is to create a financial incentive for all vendors to try to avoid using it. And we know that that should not be much of a burden for those vendors who are serious about maintaining their reputation. So these are some ideas that I think need to be considered a little more carefully in this particular ordinance. And I'd like to suggest that, I'd like to move that kind of, make that a proposed amendment to this ordinance.
If you can hold off for just a minute on moving any amendment, I apologize, when I brought this item up as this agenda item, I wanted to also give the staff a chance to point out a couple of the changes that are in this second reading ordinance that were not in the first reading ordinance. And maybe if we can get just a quick reiteration of those so that we have your proposal in context. And I also want to suggest that it's possible that we might want to, depending on the discussion on this, we might want to. on this, we might want to postpone the second reading on this until next week to incorporate things. We have that option. So just, I'm not saying go there yet, but I'm just suggesting we might want to.
That's fine.
If the staff wants to explain the changes that we currently have in the second reading, which is what is on the table.
You have a redlined version in your packet also. There are a few small changes. One is in the insurance level, so that we increased the coverage required of food vendors.
Can you cite the?
Of the fixed-location vendor permit.
Can you cite?
I'm sorry, it's page four, C6, for applicants for fixed-location permit seeking to vend on city property, proof of liability insurance policy with coverage of at least $1 million per incident.
C6.
And $3 million aggregate. I think that's more standard, and that was the city attorney, that was the legit representative request. The other change is in response to the question raised last week about the, how the rewrite in the code would affect a church rummage sale situation. And the city attorney proposed some language change on page two about yard sale and then under definitions, making it non-commercial property as opposed to residential property. So that's an opportunity to include nonprofits or religious institutions. And then adding under the exemptions, some language about the yard sales, I'm sorry, I'm on page two, 812-020A, exemptions, number four, yard sales, provided no more than four yard sales on discreet days to avoid someone saying it's a one-yard sale but it's lasting all week, are held on an individual property per calendar year. Sales on vacant lots are not exempt from vendor provisions, and that's an attempt to address the possibility of someone with a vacant lot having an ongoing rummage sale every weekend all year long. The city attorney also added exemption nine on that, spilled over onto page three, orders for delivery of newspapers. And a clarification on page three under 8.12.040B, scope of vendor permits. We just wanted to clarify what we had already intended to be in the code, which was that each representative of a company needs a permit for their vehicle. So if you have one food truck company that has several food trucks, they would need a permit for each truck that's operating in the city. I think those are the only changes from the first reading.
Okay, just so we keep it straight in our own minds, if I can see if anybody wants to make any comments on these changes, and then we'll go to Councilmember Schultz's. Councilmember Grimes?
I'm wondering about the C6 on page four, where the $3 million aggregate came from. And I'll tell you, for my own company, I have $2 million aggregate with a million per incident, and that's, I don't, I'm not a food vendor, but that $2 million aggregate seems more regular in the world that I'm in.
These numbers were from Legit, which is the local government insurance trust, which provides the city with insurance services. And this was their stronger-than-a-recommendation, wasn't it?
Stronger-than-a-recommendation.
This would be food trucks selling on city property, food trucks selling on city property, not on.
Yeah. Three million seems high to me, but, I mean, as opposed to 2 million, but let's say further.
Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I have a set of related questions to the same line. Have the vendors operating, for example, Go Fish, been approached about this level of insurance? Is it something that's going to, do we know how much this level of insurance will cost the average food truck vendor or any food truck vendor?
I have not spoken with the individual food truck vendors about the increase in the insurance. My understanding is the incremental increase is not terribly expensive. We've already been requiring them to have insurance coverage, we just hadn't specified in the pilot program they were expected to have it, or, can't remember the language now. It was part of the conversation.
So we're going from, we're going from $300,000 to $1 million, I'm not sure I recall that incremental, and up to $3 million aggregate per year. And I remember, I think it was the vendor operating Go Fish, who came and spoke to us with some concern when she originally appeared about the insurance coverage requirement in the first place. So I would just really, I mean, if on the one hand, we're asking for a $50 fee, and then the other hand, we're asking for somebody to have a $10,000 insurance policy, that would be, that's important to know as a matter before we make, adopt a policy like this, I would think.
So there are a couple of things I would just say to that. One is the $50 fee is for their vending in Tacoma Park. Most of these vendors are in many other places as well. So we're sensitive to the fact that there's a cumulative effect of permitting fees wherever else they might vendor, vend, excuse me. And presumably, or certainly, the insurance would also cover all of their work, 365 days of the year, not just the time that they're in Tacoma Park. Again, it's very specific. It's not any vending anywhere in the city, it's vending on city property. And my understanding is that Legit's concern is that if there's an incident and someone chooses to sue, typically, people sue those with the deepest pockets. And so the city's likelihood of being in a suit in something like that is probably fairly high on city property.
But I just think, Jamie, there's no similar insurance requirement at the county level, is that correct?
I don't know the county's requirement. I believe they do require insurance, I don't know what the level is.
We don't know what, so we really should know what that level is before we create our own level. And then I'm just thinking of the fact that we've allowed operations of ice cream trucks and roaming vendors, you know, for years, presumably without any insurance requirement at all. I understand that Legit thinks about liability, they think about, you know, coverage first, but the, you know, the practical implication of something like this, eliminating the very service we're trying to create, is to me, a really important issue that we need background on.
I would just like to add real quick.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Have you looked at what DC requires, since a lot of these vendors come from DC?
So the vendors in Tacoma Park have to also have Montgomery County coverage. They need Montgomery County permit and help.
We could end up on our research on what DC requires. I don't think we've got that in front of us right now, but that had been presented to the council before. It sounds to me like you have a number of questions that you'd like to have answered before you proceed, and that's fine, so maybe we can clarify those and recognize that, you know, we should postpone and come back with more information.
But I want to make sure that we've got questions on these changes that are in there, and then spend a couple of minutes on Councilmember Schultz's proposal so we flesh out any issues that need to be investigated there, and then come back to this. So anything else on the changes that staff put in the second reading? Councilmember Grimes?
Well, just further questions regarding insurance. I don't know, which is why I'm asking the situation with the farmer's market, the street festival, you know, what are the insurance requirements there, either presumably not for the individual vendors, but for the organization operating the festival, so TBA presumably has insurance. You know, does it cover the street festival individual vendors there? You know, once you open up this kind of question, it invites extending it to other similar circumstances. For that matter, if an organization rents out this auditorium for hosting a program, what are the insurance requirements there? To me, these are analogous situations, and I wonder whether a substitute here would not be to, for the city to get its own additional coverage, if such a thing exists, that would cover these vendor uses throughout the city. And I don't know what that would cost, but maybe that's one of these points you can investigate.
Yes. I do know that in the past. It's been pretty clear that we are not to do that, and we do require people who rent these spaces or do have activities on city property to have insurance. And generally, the amounts that they have to pay are not very extensive, which is useful, but I don't have that information ahead, in front of me, so we'll need to share that.
Yeah, because I think that what you were getting at for the various activities, the city kind of doing an umbrella policy, I know that the answer came back in particular on the Fourth of July celebration, fireworks, that kind of thing, that the insurance writers say that it's perfectly all right to put it under the city's umbrella coverage if it's a city event that the city is in charge of. So you have to have kind of responsibility for the event in order to have it covered under the umbrella. And the types of things that I think you're talking about may not quite meet that test.
Well, I mean, you know, you're paraphrasing here, but in charge of, if the city is, licensing is probably not the word, permitting, if the city is permitting vendors, we're in a sense in charge of those vendors. No?
It's not, it's not been interpreted that way on a number of cases.
Okay.
I'll just note that a Washington Post story talking about this very issue of insurance coverage has cites figures of $2,000 a month for insurance coverage for vehicles and other, the president of the DC Food Truck Association describing that his insurance currently costs 70% of what it costs a restaurant serving alcohol to operate.
And what's the, what does he get for it?
That one referred to $3 million coverage. Doesn't say more detail than that, but.
So we know we need more information in this area. Now, Councilmember Schultz, do you want to just remind us in a couple of sentences your proposals, and then we'll see if we need to get additional information on those, thoughts about those, to revisit all of this at a later date?
To make a finer distinction between permanent food truck vendors, as I described them, as distinct from vendors that we, that come into the city for literally a few hours, but certainly, you know, only in the measured in-hours, not measured in days, weeks, and And in so doing, to try to compensate, make sure the city gets compensated appropriately for its risks and efforts that permanent food truck vendors pose for the city in terms of its code enforcement and review of site plans and whatever else is involved, not so large as to discourage such vendors or prevent them from doing work and doing this sort of thing, but something that's a bit more realistic on an annual basis and considering the incredibly low overhead that these kind of vendors have, since they probably pay only rent to a landlord and may or may not even have to pay for electricity to operate, surely a fee in the realm of around $500 on an annual basis for the right to sell on a permanent basis at a location in the city is, that doesn't seem to be exorbitant to me. And I think a fee of $50 is a reasonable fee that we have in the ordinance, and I suggest that if those, such vendors are willing to say that they will use compostable food, products for their food and avoid using polystyrene, that we would waive that fee altogether as an incentive. Obviously, the numbers could be changed, the dollars, the dollar numbers could be changed, but maybe it's required to, at least, since you're having a contractual relationship, when somebody signs and gets a permit, maybe there needs to be a $5 thing to make, provide legal consideration for what's being offered. Those are something that could be worked out. I just, I just think that the current definitions here in the sectional definitions just don't address, don't make these distinctions adequately. And I would like to see, see those distinctions clarified. That's basically the sum of what I want to say.
Okay. Councilmember Mail?
I support Councilmember Schultz's idea of having a higher fee, a $500 fee for permanent operations. I would note that the food truck that operates in Ward Two at a permanent location creates significant costs, both for the city and for nearby residents associated with trash, absorrecycling, public urination, and other problems. So I'm supportive of that one, if especially there's a way to do it, sort of, I think you could probably find a way to do it with minimal changes in here. And then on the issue of waiving the fee for the, for people using recyclable containers, I would not, I would not support just a blanket overall, but for example, someone seeking the permit for the first time, maybe doing a one-year, first-year provision like that or something that's more modest, that's not open-ended, because I think that this is going to be a change that's going to happen throughout the whole industry, and we would end up paying for something that just becomes common operating practice after three years, five years, I don't know how long.
You mean, talking about the waiving of the $50?
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Kind of like cheaper parking permits for hybrids, and when everybody ends up with a hybrid, it's like, well, what good was that?
Right.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Roz, Ms. Crisby, if we went forward with the waiving of the fee, you know, if vendors do not use polystyrene, how would you, your office know whether or not they were doing it? And how much would it cost for you to go around to each vendor and check to see if they were doing what they were supposed to be doing?
The Conversation Council is having now echoes the Conversation staff has had for months about the, exactly this, this vendors code rewrite. There are a couple of responses I have. One is the current new proposal you have in front of you bans the polystyrene, and that ban would most likely be enforced by complaint. So someone goes to a food truck, they buy something, they look at the code on the bottom, and they realize it's not compliant, and we hear about it. We don't anticipate.
What's the penalty if you find out vendors using?
Revocation of their permit license, or their permit. So we have in place the opportunity to revoke the permit for noncompliance of, you know, any number of criteria.
Can they reapply?
They can. We don't, we haven't drilled down to the details of how long they would be without a permit before they could reapply, you know, exactly what that would look like.
Or whether they could say, oops, and we'll have those compostable or whatever, those non-polystyrene next week, and you'd say, fine, just make sure you do, you know, we'll check, or something like that, and therefore, no need to revoke?
So we expect to include an information page on plastics and polystyrene in codes to help vendors get up to speed on this, because I'm sure there will be people who have not thought about this before, and this is going to be new for them. I also want to point out that the reason composting isn't included in this version this time around is because the city only has a pilot program, and without an obvious place that we can point people to take their composted refuse at the end of the night, we felt like it was premature to require it. So the flip side of that conversation is if we now are saying, well, then we'll waive the fee if you compost, and we don't, again, have a mechanism in place for them to take their compost yet, that presents a different kind of problem. I also think human nature might be that a number of people would say, of course, they're using compostable containers when they're signing up for the permit. And again, and so then we would, with this proposal, we would end up waiving a fee with, you know, without in place a mechanism to check that each time.
They might say, of course, we'll compost these right into the landfill in some other jurisdiction.
Perhaps. We are requiring that they, you know, clean up their area, take away all trash, recycles, recyclables, you know, down the road, all compostables. So that's all written into the code. Also, another reason we could revoke a permit if trash were a significant problem.
So you're saying that you think from an enforcement point of view, which is the city's point of view, it's just easier to say no to polystyrene at the risk of losing your permit than it is to sort of create it a financial. your permit than it is to sort of create it a financial, what I'm suggesting, which is sort of a financial incentive for, to gain their cooperation?
We had conversations with the public works staff about the pilot compost program now, and we felt like we weren't, we were not yet ready to say to food vendors, you're requ, you are banned from using polystyrene, you're required to use compostables, and this is how it works, that we didn't have that last step of, at the end of the night, nine o'clock on a Friday night, what do they do with it? And so, we felt, among our discussions and staff, that we probably would amend this if, if in fact the compost program, pilot program becomes a permanent part or widely available in a situation like this, then we would want that to be part of it.
City manager have some comments, or clerk, or somebody on that microphone.
I just wanted to point out that banning polystyrene is not the same as banning plastic. So, polypropylene would be permissible under, you know, with this, so you're not, it's not polystyrene or compostable. I mean, it could be that if you make it that, but that's not what, what we've said, it's polystyrene, which a number of residents have identified as the worst of the plastics, and the one that's not recyclable at all, as opposed to certain other plastics which are.
So, one could, for example, leave the ban on polystyrene, just as it's written right now, but to Councilmember Schultz's comment, you could add that $50 fee will be waived for the use of compostable materials, or something like that. Put both incentive and prohibition in.
But it sounds like staff is saying, yeah, but when, when they say, how do we do that, we need to provide a little bit better answer that we may be coming up with, but we don't have yet.
Well, I guess I was distinguishing between compostable containers and an actual composting program for food waste. I was speaking of the cardboard containers, the use of, you know, the cardboard containers. We could incentivize that, not, I think the thing, if I'm understanding correctly, the piece that the city didn't know how to do was create a whole waste composting program of, of the food waste.
The way this is written is, at the end of the night, the food vendor is required to clean up everything in the area-
Right.
-related to their business, and remove it. So, if they're using compostables and it's all going in the landfill, I'm not sure that that gains us what we're hoping for in terms of, you know, an environmental change or beneficent impact on the planet.
Toward, toward a zero-waste policy?
We're, it doesn't get us there yet. And I, I say yet, because I honestly think we're not far off, but the expectation is the pilot program for food trucks that council authorized ends June 30th. And so, we're trying to put in place something to start this summer that's workable now, with the expectation that we can come back to council if we want to say, look, it's all got to be compostable in a year, and we have mapped out exactly how to make that work.
I guess I'm, I'm willing to back off a little bit on my proposal, and sort of go along with what you, what we have here in the draft. At least what that does is that it makes a public statement, that we're moving down the road of banning all kinds of polystyrene and its various forms, including styrofoam. And we can take another bite out of this, say, a year from now, when we're a little further along in our environmental policies and know how to implement it and make it practicable.
That, that's my recommendation.
Okay. So, do we have anything else that we want to, Ms. Daines?
Just a point of clarification. With the council, right now, the way the ordinance is set up, or the proposed ordinance is set up, we have a fixed-location vendor and a roaming vendor. If we were to establish another category that would be not someone who's parked there forever for five years or more, and not the ice cream truck that moves every 15 minutes, but the one that comes in once a week, or every five hours, or something like that, would you be open to a third vendor license category? Or do you want the fixed-location vendor definition to be more clearly defined?
I'd be open to a third category, because we're ignoring it in the definitions right now. I think the current definition of a, excuse me, the fixed-location vendor that sells from an approved location on city property or on, or on private property with the permission of the property owner is okay, but as far as it goes, but it subsumes these other vendors that we're talking about that come just for a few hours a week.
Actually, they would be included in that category. If you'll note that the roaming vendors, the definition is the only one that actually includes a time limit. So, the way the fixed vendor, fixed-location vendor was defined was anyone who stays put for more than 15 minutes. So, we can add sort of an interim category for those people that never move.
Yeah, I think 15 minutes is too short.
Well, that's, that's your ice cream truck, you know, the folks that run around.
In a residential neighborhood.
But, so the folks that are doing the food truck Friday thing, for example, they don't qualify, but they do qualify as a fixed-location vendor, because they're at a specific location with the permission of the property owner for an extended period of time. We can add a third category that sort of does that interim, folks that leave at night and go home with their truck and then come back another day.
Right.
And that's what you're interested in.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because once you, when you've done that, then you have a way of discriminating between the two in terms of fees and the kind of labor that is imposed on the city, the kind of risks that's imposed on the city between those two. Right now, we don't have the ability to make that distinction.
One of the reasons that the city's internal review of the site plan was added to the fix, fixed-location vendor was an attempt on our part to reduce the amount of staffing time that is required for those vendors that have parked their vehicle and have not moved it since before any of us were born. By giving us that ability to approve the site plan and not just go with whatever the county has included in their license and thing, we get a greater control over where it's located, arrangements for trash recycle, or trash receptacles and things like that. Because frankly, the biggest complaints we get for fixed-location vendors now, the trucks that are in, are not moving anywhere, is that they're too close to residential properties and, or the dumpster that they are using is right underneath somebody's bedroom window, things like that, which we think we can address through the site plan review process internally. So ideally, it will reduce some of the time that code enforcement is out, talking to people about trash and debris and that sort of thing.
And, you know, one of the things that is important is with the site plan review requirement, a number of the folks who are out there right now may not be able to be there.
Or in a different, on the same property, but perhaps in a different location.
They may have to move. I mean, I mean, one of the things that this gives us is some real control over some of those that have been there for a long time, that when we look at the site plan, we think they may not be able to fit there, or they may not have to be in that same place.
I, I have no problem with the idea of the site plan approach to what I call permanent vendors. I think that that's overdue, because, you know, we looked at the location up on Anne and University, and the, and the truck is pushed right up against, next to the brick building where there are businesses in there, and Lord only knows, if the truck catches fire, the building catches fire. The odors that emanate have to inevitably going to penetrate, not to mention the running of generators and all the other stuff that might, that could ensue. It just seems sensible.
So, I think we'll, we'll see if we can find a third category.
So, Ms. Daines, you have the direction you need on, on this piece, on the categories, right?
I think we're in, we totally understand.
Okay. So, we have various changes that we, that we need to see, and we need to have it on next week's agenda in order to get this done before June 30th.
So, do we table?
That's, that's, that's all we have. That's the, we have one more meeting before June 30th.
No?
I recognize that the timing has to do with the fact that the pilot program expires the end of June. If we could get back to you between now and-
Now and Thursday?
Now and tomorrow, maybe. It might be, it might give us more sufficient, or more adequate time to address some of the insurance requirements, the licensing requirements, et cetera. If we could just have another resolution extending it out for another month or two. I mean, that would solve the problem.
Whatever we need to do, we need to do it next week.
Yeah, because I don't really want to just rush through this and then have to go back and fix it.
Okay. Therefore, what we need to do is, we have this on the table, can we maybe just-
Take, take a look until next week.
Well, but it sounds, it's, it's, but it sounds like we may be tabling it to more than next week.
I think we have to have some discussions tomorrow.
So, therefore, no matter what it's called, how about we remove it from the table and we'll come back to it?
What about motion to table?
Motion to table indefinitely.
Motion to table indefinitely.
Or, or-
That's what it needs to be.
Which is the kiss of death.
Can we make the motion to table not indefinitely?
Yes, you can.
Well, we can, but then when would that be? We don't know.
You can bring it back to on the table when you want to.
Yeah. So, we'll come back to it as soon as we can. So, is there a motion to table indefinitely?
Yes, I agree with you.
Okay. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, let's, since we're, since Councilmember Daniels Cohen is participating by phone, if the clerk will please call her on.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen? I think we've lost her.
Oh, okay.
I can't imagine why.
Well, given that, all those in favor of the motion to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it unanimously.
I was here, yes. I'm sorry, yes.
She's muted. She was muted.
Okay. It's, it's a unanimous seven rather than a unanimous six. Okay. And then we have a consent agenda. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda with five items on it? Is there a second for the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. All those in, we need to do a roll call since Councilmember Daniels Cohen has to decide. Remotely, will the clerk please call her on?
Councilmember Daniels Cohen?
Yes.
Councilmember Grimes?
Yes.
Councilmember Mayo?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Aye. The yeses have it with the help of the ayes. The consent agenda passes unanimously. We will take a short break and come back for our two work session items.
Love it.
And our, first of our two remaining work session items is a discussion of the election vendor selection. If the city clerk wants to let us know where we are on this, and I know we have a couple of members of the Board of Elections who have been here the whole evening, I know they must be fascinated by all of this conversation on all these various topics. They're still awake. Ms. Carpenter?
So, on May 28th, the Board of Elections presented its recommendation for selection of a vendor, and the board recommended, at that time, true ballot, ballot on demand. And that recommendation took cost into consideration in addition to factors related to election management, voter experience, and accuracy. The board at that time noted that its first choice was ESNS, but it hesitated to recommend it because of the cost. So, the council heard that recommendation and had a discussion, and there was no consensus on the part of the council as to which way to go. And the council was considering the two relatively more expensive options, ESNS and true ballot with ballot on demand. So, the board, after that meeting, the board met to, to reevaluate its considerations and reconsider and determine whether or not it should change its recommendation. And at that meeting, the board unanimously voted to recommend selection of ESNS because of the advantages it would provide, which would be really as close to have a compliant as we could get, which is voter error notification, independent voting for voters with certain disabilities, and ease of election management. So, the board, I don't want to speak for them, but, but they, I think I can say that the decision at this point is in the council's hands. The board is recommending ESNS, but you have the information that the board provided before within your agenda packet where it, on the third page, where it outlined the ultimately four options, the two true ballot options, one for end-of-day scanning, one for end-of-day scanning with ballot on demand, the ESNS proposal, or the manual count. And I, I could say the, I would urge you not to go towards manual count, but really, it's, of course, it's the council's decision, and, and the board's made its recommendation, and the council should decide.
Can you just say a little bit more? It was noted here somewhere about the potential for the addition, some of them might require additional people to help kind of close things out, and what that might entail, either in terms of ease of getting people, or cost, or whatever the considerations are in that.
I don't think getting people will be a problem with, we estimate with true ballot, we'd want to bring in a couple of closers, because the ballots have to be handled and, not counted, but they have to be aligned to be put through the scanner. So, we would anticipate the need for just a couple of closers to, to help with that.
And by closers, who are you talking about?
We would bring in, we would recommend appointment of judges who would only work at the end of the day, so that when all the other things that have to be done to close out the election, we wouldn't, it wouldn't delay things greatly, because we'd have folks just working on preparing the ballots for scanning, and maybe doing some other things. The most expensive, staff-wise, or not staff-wise, but in terms of judges, would be the, if, if you wanted a manual count done, we would recommend bringing in quite a few people to actually do that count at the end.
So, so bringing closers in is logistic, a logistic consideration, but it's not a difficulty in terms of either getting people or cost?
There'd be a little cost, but I, I wouldn't anticipate difficulty in, in getting folks to do it.
I was just trying to determine, you know, whether, whether that changed the, the dynamics in terms of the relationship of the two options on cost. It sounds like it doesn't.
No, not, no.
Okay.
No.
And maybe if we can hear from the Board of Elections, if there's anything that you want to say to kind of characterize your, your recommendation this evening. It's kind of the same as it was before, but it's kind of different, then, if you just, if there's anything you want to say about that.
I think Jesse explained it quite eloquently and summarized the board's thoughts on this matter. So, I would just note that I think the feedback that we got on the experience of voting, particularly for allowing the independent ability of people to vote who, who can't see, I think that, that was important to a number of us as we discussed that, so. And we're happy to entertain questions.
Okay. Council comments. Councilmember Grimes, you were, you had to leave before the end of the meeting where we discussed this. You've weighed in since and said you thought the true- You've weighed in since and said you thought the true ballot was the way to go?
I watched the recording of the rest of the meeting, and I did think true ballot was the way to go, but that's before I heard the revised recommendation for ESNS. And I have to say that my inclination is to go with the committee's recommendation, the Board's recommendation.
Councilmember Mayo.
Thank you. I noted last time that my mind was sort of closely in the middle. I put out a message to constituents and heard back from two people, surprisingly, in favor of the ESNS proposal, so I'm inclined to go that direction in conjunction with the Board of Elections making that one.
Other comments from other councilmembers?
I support the Board's selection, or recommendation.
Consider, I support the Board's recommendation. I think that would make it unanimous, at least except for Kay.
Kay, you want to make it unanimous?
Did you call me?
Yes, you want to make it unanimous? Everybody up here is saying supporting the Board of Elections' recommendation for ESNS.
I'm a, while ESNS is seriously expensive, like $5,000 more, both the staff and the election committee have said it's okay with them, and that's the one they want to use. I've got to go with people who've done this, who've done this before, which is not me. Whatever they say, again, you pay now, you pay later with interest and dividends, so, or the other one is you get what you paid for. So the $23,500 one seems to be the way everybody wants to go.
So the answer is yes.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we could. So it sounds like it's unanimous. The council agrees with the Board of Elections, and we'll go with ESNS.
Okay, so I'll prepare an ordinance for council in July. There's still some final negotiation to take care of, but I'll prepare an ordinance for July.
Okay, good. Thank you all.
Thank you.
That brings us to our last work session item for this evening, which is a discussion of parking of commercial vehicles in residential zones. And yeah, you've had a couple items.
Yes. As you know, Councilmember Schultz brought up the fact that the current city code on commercial vehicles on public property is somewhat vague and highly unenforceable, or it's enforceable by Solomon only, because the 21-year-old officer that shows up has to figure out what's fair and what's not. And it really is too vague for the officers to interpret. It's done haphazardly, the enforcement, and there is no consistency. And part of that is the definition of commercial vehicle. If you look at the city code, which I think you should have on the worksheet, the city code just basically says, "Commercial vehicle means any vehicle designed for and regularly used for carrying freight or merchandise." Okay, well, does the Mary Kay cosmetic car, when she's delivering or he's delivering stuff to somebody's house, is that car a commercial vehicle now? The county, a couple of years ago, was in the same predicament. They had numerous complaints about boat trailers parked for excessive lengths of time, recreational vehicles, large commercial vehicles in neighborhoods that were parked. And the county came up with a couple of definitions. And there's two aspects to this. There's parking on public property, on the public street, and there is also parking of commercial vehicles within the property owner's property in a residential neighborhood. And the county addressed both, and actually, since we have, we use the county zoning, that the existing law and definitions of a commercial vehicle already apply to parking these commercial vehicles on private property. So we really don't have to address that issue. What I would like to see is us adopt the definitions at minimum of heavy commercial vehicle and light commercial vehicle that the county uses already, and that we actually use in our zoning ordinance for our parking ordinance as well on public streets. Then I think we need to go to the public and see where they would like to go with this. I think at the minimum, I think that the adoption of prohibiting heavy commercial vehicles in residential streets would probably be the way to go. Where you run into problems is the light commercial vehicles, like somebody's work truck or a plumbing truck that somebody owns in their business or their home business. That's where we run into the issues of where do we draw that balance between somebody having a business working out of their home and somebody that has three or four trucks in front of their house, taking up valuable resources in parking, as we know in this city, that it's a valuable resource. I've also, on this, given you the definitions of heavy commercial vehicle, what I can do is get with the county attorney for some, or the city attorney, and we can come up with some draft, draft language for the actual adoption of that county code into the city code so that we can enforce it. But I do think that there needs to be some public hearings on the extent of what would be a violation and what wouldn't.
I would like to mention that when the chief and I were talking about this, we don't actually have a lot of complaints put forward to the police department. So, you know, sometimes it's just kind of anecdotal things that you hear when you're talking with somebody, but in terms of actual complaints, we don't receive very many. So one of the, in this kind of recommendation to you for this discussion, I think one is just trying to find out if you have a sense of the extent of a problem that needs to be addressed. The definition of the commercial vehicle, I do think, is something we all agree thinks needs to be addressed. But in terms of what kind of restrictions there might be on streets, that really is a council and community discussion, and trying to decide what you want to do with that.
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a, I think this is a huge issue in my ward. You know, I represent a ward that has many blue collar workers who, many of whom run their independent businesses out of their homes. This includes taxicab drivers, plumbers, landscapers, limousine services, and we have, through the years, had very little problems with what would be classified probably as commercial vehicles in the neighborhood. And in fact, the neighbors working together kind of keep each other happy. You know, most recently, and you know, just a couple of years ago, we had someone starting up a limousine service, and as I'm sure many of you noticed, on Ritchie Avenue, there were limousines coming and going. You know, this fellow was starting a new business, and as such, didn't have a lot of resources. And so he used his driveway and his, and the street in front of his house to park the limousines while he got his business going. We had talked with the neighbors about it and, you know, worked out restrictions between the neighbors on what was acceptable and what was unacceptable. You know, some people said that it would be fine as long as he didn't park in front of their place, and he was very cooperative on that. And when, and when one of his drivers would forget, you know, the neighbors would remind him and, you know, resolve the issues ourselves. And yeah, there was probably, probably some question as far as whether that would meet with county code or recommended codes that we're going to be discussing tonight. But overall, you know, working together as a community, we were able to, people were happy. And in fact, some people were disappointed when he finally got a lot to move the limousines to because they felt it was a better traffic calming measure than speed bumps, as he was, he always seemed to have, you know, one or two limousines on the street that kind of narrowed the street there, or else he slowed people down while he was trying to back around the corner in the driveway. And I have to say, you know, I've got my truck parked in my driveway, which is a stakebody truck, which probably meets some definition of a commercial vehicle. I've got a camper parked in the driveway, so I don't get complaints from the neighbors about it, don't have, I don't, I don't think there is a problem with it. I mean, these are our homes and our property, and we're all kind of living together and getting along, so I'm reticent to support any changes in this regard.
Well, in fact, those, just real quickly, I mean, as far as parking on the residential property, you'd still be in compliance because that's the existing law now in Tacoma Park. As far as a limousine service under the current law, there is no limit to the number of limousines that anybody could park on the street, but it's because it's not defined as a commercial vehicle, from my interpretation, even though it is. In the county code, it would be, but not in the city code, not for parking on the residential street. Now, the--
I use that as an example because it was noticed by a lot of people, but you know, we do have the plumber down the road and the landscaper on down the road, and so there are, there are vehicles that probably would be defined as commercial vehicles.
And absolutely. What I'm, I'm not suggesting that you outlaw the parking of those vehicles on the street. What I'm suggesting is that we define, we get in compliance with the county as far as the definition of those vehicles, and not at all saying how they should be restricted from parking. That would be a discussion for the council and the constituents, the business people that have home businesses to make.
What's the benefit to changing the definition, other than starting down a slippery slope?
Well, it's really not, because what I think you're doing is getting consistency, because the law already exists in the city of Tacoma Park, because the county zoning code applies in the city of Tacoma Park, so that we do have those definitions of what is a commercial vehicle and what is not.
The issue, though, is that we do have this thing that says you can't have commercial vehicles parked on the residential streets. And then there's, then it's only done by complaint, and there's a kind of question, well, what is a commercial vehicle when you get out there? And the question is, you know, what do police officers call it at the time? And we do need to have some direction on it.
So what it does, though, is by standardizing the definition, then it enables you to enforce the law.
Well, we can enforce it now. It's actually more discretionary, because what is a commercial vehicle now could be anything that delivers goods or merchandise, and it's totally prohibited from parking. It doesn't discriminate between a heavy commercial vehicle, you know, a truck that's 10,000 pounds, 10,000 pounds or more, or certain size limits. It doesn't, doesn't talk about recreational vehicles on the street. That's what this would change. It doesn't affect parking, like I said, this doesn't affect parking on residential property whatsoever, other than what exists now in the county code, the county zoning code. This would just be getting our city code in line with the definitions of what is a heavy commercial vehicle and what is a light commercial vehicle. As far as changing the actual violation, the council is free to look at what they want to include in parking on the city streets in a residential zone, whether they want to totally allow all light commercial vehicles and just limit heavy commercial. That's discretionary upon the council, and we're not, I'm not making a suggestion or one way or the other. I just want a better definition of what is a commercial vehicle, so that the officer that responds knows what type of commercial vehicle it is. And then if the law says you can't park more than two light commercial vehicles in the street in a business you own, then so be it. But if you, if you park three, then one of them gets towed, or one of them gets a citation. That's up to the council. I mean, we don't get that many calls for service where it impacts us, but when we do get the calls, we do have a couple companies in the city that park dump trucks or cement trucks, you know, and every so often, we'll get that complaint that the person's parking three or four cement trucks in the street. And I don't think that's, that was the intent of the law, and because it's clear as mud, you know, there is no discretion for the officer, really, when you look at a cement truck parked there, or you look at somebody's pickup truck that he delivers, you know, does home deliveries with. I think there needs to be some differentiation. Let's face it, a pickup truck's not blocking the street, but a big 10,000-pound truck would.
If I can just make sure that we're clear, that currently, the zoning code covers not allowing certain commercial vehicles parked on residential property at all.
Yeah.
Which is the definition there in bold at the bottom of the second page.
Yeah, basically, parking of commercial and recreational vehicles on residential property, it says one light commercial vehicle may be parked on residential property, and it goes into the definition, that's the county zoning code, which we don't enforce, that's code enforcement. And then it says not permitted on residential parking. A tow truck is not permitted to park with a disabled car attached. Parking of two or more commercial vehicles is not allowed, and parking of heavy commercial vehicles is not allowed, and it defines what a heavy commercial vehicle is. So that already exists in Tacoma Park now.
Right. And when the county was changing that code, I provided some information to the county council that, in their wisdom, they ignored, that they have heavy commercial vehicle defined, among other things, as anything more than 21 feet long. And I pointed out that that included stock pickup trucks that were currently for sale and, you know, just available as something that people ride their families around in, and those are technically, they can't park them in their own driveway.
Well, and I agree with you. They didn't listen to me either, so as a district commander at the time, especially being in charge of Montgomery Village, which the homeowners associations had much more tighter restrictions, and that's why you see on all the county streets surrounding Montgomery Village, all the work vans, pickup trucks, et cetera, because they can't park them in their own driveways. And that's not right either. But that's a private property issue and not a violation of the law. I agree with you. I mean, we don't have to take the exact definition of what they, but I do believe that you can say a heavy commercial vehicle is a truck that's 10,000 pounds or more, or a tractor trailer, or just the tractor portion. Those are the common sense things. But I think that we need to define it a little bit more. And again, this is the zoning code.
Right.
And then they adopted that same language to the parking, which I agree with you. I mean, we can use those definitions, but that doesn't mean we have to have the prohibitions.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Right. I love that in Ward Four, they can work it out amongst themselves, but it hasn't always been the case in Ward Three. And there are some heavy issues, pun intended, with commercial vehicles being parked on the street. Now, that situation may have solved itself because the individual involved may have made some kind of a driveway that they could park their large trailer on their own property. But I think, I agree, we need a definition of what is a commercial vehicle. There's another, another small business in Ward Three that is a seasonal business and is a landscaping-type business, but people come to get their, some of their equipment repaired and leave their commercial vehicles on this rather narrow street, and there's been complaints. You know, everybody likes, everybody likes everybody, but there's still been complaints. So I think we definitely need some definition and even some way of finding spots for people with a number of commercial vehicles to actually rent a space to park outside their home or outside the residential area. I mean, that's a little Pollyanna of me, but I know you're not surprised about that. But that's sort of what we did to help solve the one problem. It's already come up in Ward Three about some months ago. So we definitely need a definition of what is a commercial vehicle and where can it park. Hello, did you hear me?
Yes. I'll go to Councilmember Schultz in a second. I'll just add on one quick thing on the Councilmember Daniels Cohen's comment about we definitely need to define a commercial vehicle. I know I heard another definition of a commercial vehicle that I didn't quite understand or appreciate at the time that it was provided, which was from the National Park Service, which was about commercial vehicles not allowed on parkways. And I said, how do you define a commercial vehicle? And they said, we know one when we see one. It tends to have writing on the-- It tends to have writing on the door identifying it as a commercial business, but not always.
And park actually, anything over three quarters of a ton, they consider a commercial vehicle, although we see those driving down Sligo through Parkway every day. But that's why I'm saying we need a better definition.
Councilmember Schultz.
I've gotten a lot of complaints, but even more expressions of consternation from people in my ward. And the consternation comes from people, just residents, sort of feeling like it's not right, what somebody's doing, but they don't know what the law is, and they want me to tell them. Of course, I can't tell them, except what we already have just talked about. There's a number of situations that have occurred in my ward. For example, for a period of time last year, a tow truck driver and the owner of a fairly good sized box truck were parking on Ann Street. And apparently neither of those two, the owners, actually resided anywhere in the neighborhood. It's just that Ann Street was wide enough, close enough to New Hampshire Avenue, and there was plenty of curb space, because there's very few front doors on Ann Street. So they just parked their cars there, their vehicles there. I didn't know about it until one of the folks complained, and then I forwarded it on to you, and then, you know, your officer, maybe it was before you came on board, I'm not sure, responded. There's another property owner who really is, owns his home and makes, keeps the property and grounds immaculate. And he's got a business which involves probably four to five white vans, some of which have ladders on top, and he parks them in front of his property. So the trucks are probably cleaner than, I keep my car, or cars. But the fact of the matter is, is that it seems to some people, including myself, is that obviously the family can't drive five trucks every day, so they're using employees to use those trucks. And those employees are coming from someplace elsewhere. And so that suggests that while light commercial vehicles should be an acceptable thing, that there might need to be a limit on how many of them you can have. There's another guy on another street that has a good piece of his front yard paved, and parks three to four of these kind of light commercial vehicles, like plumbing trucks, literally in his front yard. Again, the property's well maintained, probably well maintained because the property, because the business is a successful business, and he's got the money to maintain it. But, and I guess we can thank the Department of Permitting Services for leaving this guy alone, because they probably, if they were enforcing the zoning ordinance proactively, they might have noticed that this was probably a violation of the county zoning ordinance. I don't know. On the other hand, I've also gotten complaints from residents about a person that has his outboard boat parked on a trailer, sitting detached from anything to pull it, sitting at the curb for a long time. Sometimes it's on the curb, sometimes it's in the driveway. People can get by, but it takes up a little bit of room. Another situation very close to that is sort of a handmade hauler, that somebody sort of nailed a lot of boards together on the back of some kind of a trailer, and it just sits there for days and weeks and months, and maybe years. I've never seen it move. It's never connected to the vehicle. And I'm thinking, why can't this guy park it in his driveway? I don't know whether that would be a violation under new rules that we would adopt, but...
It's violation number three. You can't have something there for 72 hours.
72 hours is a max.
Well, I know we can, and that, you know, we use that, enforce that law very judiciously, because a lot of us leave our car in the same spot more than 72 hours. But we do it, we use that ordinance when we need to. There's no alternative.
Are you saying it's selective enforcement?
Yeah.
It's complaint based.
Yeah, it's complaint based. And it seems to work. It's a good ordinance. I, myself, have an RV, but I don't have a driveway. Only way I could have a driveway would be to take down a tree, which would get me in far deeper trouble than anyone here can imagine. This would be a big tree. It's 20 feet long, but it fits in a normal parking space. Basically a van, an enhanced camper van. In some ways of drafting this ordinance, that could be made to be illegal, because it's a recreational vehicle, and it doesn't get moved very often. In fact, it got moved so little often that the darn battery died on it last week, because I didn't move it enough. So now I gotta drive it more. So trying to figure out, my point is, with all these kinds of examples, where do you sort of draw the dotted line in an ordinance to say, this sort of thing is reasonable and acceptable, because we don't want to prevent people from having successful small businesses in their home, as so many people in the city do. But on the other hand, there's a dividing line, where too much of doing something isn't going to, it's just unreasonable, and it's unfair. I mean, I think a guy having limousine business is fine, but on the other hand, we also know that some limousines can be 30 feet long, or even longer.
They were.
Hmm?
They were.
They were. You know, and so if it's a street where there's lots of room to park, fine. Like, who would care? But if it's a street, like some of the streets in my ward, where there's not enough parking as it is, even with driveways, there's just too many houses too close together with tenants and stuff, there's just not enough parking, then it becomes like grounds for, you know, assault and battery practically. Obviously, I think, you know, any ordinance, and we would all agree, that is confusing and not understandable by residents, not even to say the police officers who are enforcing, is not good law. And so these things need to be clear. And I think it would make people a whole lot more comfortable if they knew what was what, so that they could legitimately say, this is, what this person over here is doing is too much. I've had complaints from people about cabs. And personally, I mean, that's just, you know, cab's a regular sedan. The fact that it's used for commercial purposes and represents somebody's total livelihood is something that needs to be taken into consideration. I don't think cabs should be forbidden.
Well, under the current code, they're not.
Right.
Merchandise or freight, it's not a conveyance. That's why the limousine would be exempt as well, under the current.
So, I'm not trying to say this is what the law needs to be tonight, but I just think that, I'm trying to just sort of lay out what I see as some of the complexities that we're going to need to deal with, so that we can come up with something that's simple, as we can make it. But, you know, it's something that you guys can enforce, without sort of saying, oh, God, no, I don't want to have to do this one. Because what happens is it's a complaint basis. Some guy finds that he's just gotten his rear end in hot water, and he can't park his truck like he used to, but he says, well, yeah, but what about the guy down the street? And you say, well, nobody's complained about him yet. And you get this disharmony.
No, I agree. I was, I'm certainly not suggesting that we come up with legislation tonight, but I think it does justify the discussion. The definitions are the easy part, what actually is a violation, and what you're going to allow, and what isn't, isn't. And the county, if you remember during that process, when they went through this, and there is a lot of public hearings on this, and there is, to this day, there's probably no agreement on what should or shouldn't have been done. The problem I saw with it, where I was working, was that they use, that it basically took these people that were between a rock and a hard place, mostly blue collar workers, people with, even pickup trucks, didn't have to be a commercial vehicle, that couldn't park in their residential parking spaces, were parking on county streets, and now the county came in and said, oh, by the way, you can't park it here either. Yeah, and these are their actual vehicles that they drive to work. This isn't a commercial vehicle. So I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, there's no, that's not necessarily the perfect solution, as far as the definitions, but I think we can drill down a little bit better than what we do.
I think we can do a better job than the county did.
Yeah.
No comment.
You can comment. You're safe here.
For the purposes of going forward, I mean, for the purposes of going forward, I think that we can, you know, come back with some kind of modifications of the county's definitions of commercial vehicles, and provide that. The question, I guess, would be, you know, how do you want to communicate what you do with it, once you get that? Do you want to continue to basically have something that prohibits commercial vehicles from parking on residential streets, once you better define what a commercial vehicle is? Do you want to think about that?
I want to think about it.
I think, I've done some thinking about this, not terribly recently, but I've done a lot of thinking. And I think it will require us to kind of come up with a line that is beyond what we have now, and beyond what the county has now, that we can define a commercial vehicle, so that everybody agrees that that's definitely a commercial vehicle, and it gives us some margin to where we might include some things that are, that we might exclude some things from the definition of commercial vehicle, that some people might argue are commercial vehicles, and I think we'll have a lot easier time dealing with the particular problems that crop up. So that if it's something like cement trucks, everybody would agree, that's commercial vehicles, and, you know, there should be prohibitions. But when you get into some other types of commercial vehicles that are not as problematic, that it can be a little easier to define them out of the commercial vehicle category, rather than in it.
Yeah, and the other thing, and my ADHD's kicking in, that creates some problems, where actually alleviates the problem is, if you have a neighborhood that is a permitted neighborhood, parking permits, that sort of self-limits, to a degree, the number of cars that park there anyway. So it's really more of a problem in the neighborhoods where there is no parking zones, and permits aren't required, because there's no limit. So, you know, we don't see it in all the wards, or all the areas, especially where, you know, you have to have a residential parking permit for those vehicles.
And we don't want to do, we don't want to make blanket the whole city with residential parking permits.
And I'm not suggesting it. I'm just saying that that sort of self-limits it, and that may be why you don't see it in some wards and some neighborhoods, is because they only have so many parking permits, and that's it.
And I will add on to one of Councilmember Schultz's comments, in terms of how you deal with enforcement, and going to somebody and saying, you know, well, it was complaint-based, and, you know, this, you can't do this. And they say, but what about the person down the street with their particular situation? I can say that that can, even when it's not that case, but it's the case where the police say, okay, here's the complaint, but now we're going to have to do the other ones too, in order to treat everybody fairly, can engender just as many hard feelings and just as many complaints.
Absolutely.
Because I've been on the short end of that one, where I came down and wanted to talk with the chief directly, and at the time, it was Chief Fisher, which was a while ago.
Yes.
And it was like, why did I get this ticket? It was like, well, because we had to be fair. Somebody complained a mile away from you, but we got everybody. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just end it by saying that, you know, Tacoma Park prides itself on our wide diversity of residents in the city, and that includes, you know, economic diversity. And I think one of the challenges that we face with an issue like this is that there are different cultures, and those cultures sometimes have conflicting priorities. And so I think it's going to be a challenge for this council to see how we can balance those, that conflict, or those conflicts, so there can be a quality-of-life place for all of our residents.
I just thought of one other thing, where commercial vehicles actually get a break in the city.
Did you hear me?
Parking, or permit parking zones allow parking of commercial vehicles. If they're working at a house, you don't have to have a visitor permit. So it's one place where commercial vehicles actually get a break.
We also need to think about the advantage of having wide vehicles parked at curbs, when it comes to helping with traffic calming. I'm sure one of those, that just some or another got stalled on Large Avenue, would help the folks over there an awful lot.
Anything else on this item? So staff will make an attempt at coming up with some definition of commercial vehicles, and we will revisit this as a, probably as another work session item.
And I would appreciate any input that we get from the council, and some direction as far as what they would like to see as a commercial vehicle, just suggestions, so we're not coming back 20 times with different things. I'd rather get some of that input right up front.
Sounds like a couple of us have some very definite ideas.
Yeah.
I do.
Okay, thanks. I don't see anything else on our agenda, so without objection, we're adjourned.
Love it, love it, love it.
Love it, love it, love it.